Melissa?
Can you hear me? Yeah, okay, great. Oh, you're muted.
Our room mic isn't working, hold on.
We're gonna log off and then log back in, not me, I'll be right here, but the administrative link. So if you get lost, I mean, if it drops you, then just come back in on the link.
Alright, sounds good.
Okay, they're logging off and trying to log back in. Interestingly, Nick, when you did that, you would, you never showed up on that screen as even being in this call. I have a city of Lake Forest Park that's on, which is maybe on Steve's computer. Yeah, so that wasn't even showing in the panelist's room. So maybe you were at the link of the attendee, not a panelist?
Do you have the webinar ID number?
I do, it is for tonight for a panelist, it is. But if you're not a panelist, then your mic doesn't work, right? Just your speaker. Oh, I see, I see. Okay. We're getting it figured out, y'all.
Can you hear us? Oh, boy, two years in and we're still stuck. Okay. Now that we have that worked out, we'll call this meeting to order. I think I could jump off of here now, so we're not seeing me. There we go. Okay, welcome and good evening, everybody. It's good to see you, sorry I missed you last time. Lois did a fine job sharing. And for posterity, I'm sorry, this TJ's last meeting, but I started tradition a few years ago of doing notes for departing commissioners and some baked goods. And so if you're interested in continuing that tradition with me, I'd love to be able to pick up some notes and share baked goods and sort of celebration of TJ's, you know, the end of his term with us. So maybe bring those to the next meeting. I'll bring treats to share and then we'll take some treats and I'll drop off the cards to TJ. His trip got postponed because the station has a big outbreak of COVID. And so it's unclear when that will. You know, he's around, he's around, yeah.
What's his excuse?
Okay, let's see, I need to get an agenda up there in front of us and we've called things to order. Does somebody want to read our land acknowledgement? I'll read it, I haven't read it in a while. Okay, we'd like to acknowledge we're on the traditional land of a rich and diverse group of native peoples who have called this area home for more than 10,000 years. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the descendants of these native peoples who are still here today. In doing this, we aim to illuminate the longer history of this land we call home, our relationships to this history and the heritage of those peoples whose ancestors lived here before the European-American immigration that began in the 1800s. And then I'd love to take a motion on our agenda. Anything that you guys want to add or delete or discuss about our agenda? All those in favor of the agenda as published, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent, alright, that passes. How about meeting minutes? Did everyone have a chance to look those over? Could I get a motion to bring those to the table? Okay, thank you. Were there any corrections on the meeting minutes? Okay, all those in favor of approving the meeting minutes as published, they say aye. Opposed? In terms of our next meeting date, were there, were there any things that we needed to discuss now? Should, do we need to look for a different date or is everyone available for? What is that? The 13th? David and Melissa, so 13th looking good for you?
I'm available.
I may be out of town, but I can't say for sure right at the moment. So we should just go ahead with the date.
Okay, then possibly you could still join by Zoom, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. Alright, we'll move forward with the 13th. What about citizen comments? Do we have anyone in the, in the room? That's my sweetheart. Okay, I don't see his hand up, so I'm thinking he doesn't have anything to say. Alright, moving along. How about council member Bodhi, what do you have to share with us today?
The council has been hard at work on the budget, so that's occupied a lot of our time. The council knows about your comprehensive plant work that's starting only by my brief report. So it is still something that seems like it's in the distance to them. But they, they are planning to hear from planning commission representatives on your sign recommendations and your reasonable use exemption recommendations in the near future. But it could end up getting pushed, honestly, because we don't have that many meetings in December. It could end up getting pushed into January or early next year. But I, I think it's still top of mind. It's just that budget priorities, it's the biennial budget for 23 and 24 within the face of all the economic uncertainty and inflation that is, you know, kind of kicking our butts. So don't put that out of me. So anyway, yes, so those will still be coming forward with some dialogue with planning question. So nothing else really to, to report because that's been consuming a lot of time. Well, sound transit remains a topic of active discussion because of their current efforts. And the city did send a letter to, to the Sound Transit Board complaining about the lack of good communication or a lack of sufficient transparency. Sound Transit recently published their 60% design specs, which aren't still very detailed. And they are indicating that they'd be willing to have a community public meeting, maybe in February. So again, not all that responsive, but our city staff team will be putting together comments on 60% design. So we have had a lot of public comment at council meetings, basically saying, why don't we just say no thanks for now? Considering the list of all the impacts, the low ridership, the economic cost, that it's only going to create a bus lane on one street, but it's going to affect 80 property owners. Maybe we just, you know, either say no thanks for food or no thanks for the time being.
And no thanks to what?
To the creation, the widening of the road and the creation of the one-way bus lane from 170th to 145th. That's what, that's what all these impacts are associated with, is creating a dedicated bus lane in both directions. We have northbound, we don't have southbound. So, so it's to widen the road basically to create that southbound bus line, which might improve transit times by literally single-digit minutes. So, so there's a lot of, a lot of property owners, like it's, it's very compelling. One, one person who lives on the lake side of the street, basically the road widening would take away her driveway. And so the road and the sidewalk would be like right up against her front door. So it's just a, you know, a high-impact project. You, you probably have heard over 400 trees, many significant, over 500 shrubs and bushes. Some of that is the soundproofing that people use with 522. So I think the council has been listening and, and at least we haven't taken any official, official position. But at the last council meeting where this was discussed, there's a lot of concern about moving ahead with this project. So anyway, I'm thinking about speaking at the Sound Transit Board meeting this Thursday. You've got, I would be considered a member of the public and I would get two minutes. So I have to speak really fast.
Can you say no? I mean, can, can Lake Forest Park say no?
Well, what, what I said could, don't put this in the notes, please. What I think could be done is they could, you know, like the parking garage, they said, we're going to postpone it to 2044. Well, postpone this part of the project to 2044, I'd be okay with that. They don't have to say no. They can just say, not the right time to spend, I forget what it is, about $30 million on this project and create all this controversy when the need is not compelling right now. So it could be kind of a win-win with a little, you know, diplomatic.
Would they still be able to bring Bus Rapid Transit on as, as a pastor and just not have the funds in our city?
Yes, they're doing it anyway. I mean, they're, when they come to 145th, there's no dedicated bus lanes either way. So the goal, they're planning to turn onto, you know, 145th to go to the light rail station. So that is already kind of a bottleneck. So I, I think that it won't make that much difference in getting dump off a way when you look at their own statistics. And I think, I forget what it is, like two minutes difference. And, and we're trying to slow down the speed limit on Popple Way as a council too. So, you know, it could disappear.
Anyway, sorry to spend so much on that transit. That's, it's a big topic. Melissa or David, do you have questions of council member Bodhi?
Ira asked my question.
And I'm good, thank you.
Do we, you're talking with them about that. Do we also have any ability to understand the long-term intentions with a parking garage? It seems like that parcel now here next to City Hall will be in limbo for 20 years.
There's, there's no legal hold on it, right? So.
But they can exercise imminent delay, right?
At some, at some point, but I think the point is they're not going to spend money on it right now. So nothing, I mean, if there's additional development of the, of the mall in the meantime between now and when they would start thinking about the parking garage, they would just have to adapt to whatever. Is that right, Steve?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's no.
But is it an incentive for any, anybody, whether it's Merlo and Dyer or another property owner to build on that parcel, knowing that sound transit may come in, in a, you know, 15 to 20-year horizon and exercise?
It could cut the other way too, assuming there's some actual development that's beyond current professional building site. It could, it could perfectly lack location for the sound transit parking garage. So it cuts both ways. Again, I'm not an expert, but I'm just speculating.
Yeah. Do you know, have anything to add to that, Steve?
Well, I, I think that Sound Transit, you know, they don't have any, they're not tied to that particular site any more than any other site. It just, it was the most likely place when they were looking around for sites. But if it was redeveloped or, you know, there was a, no mixed usability there, I think they would go elsewhere, like maybe look at some other portion of town center. Because they, you know, they looked at a few different places.
Sure, sure.
I'm just curious. But 2044 is quite a ways out. Yeah, think about the fact that, you know, what was, what was 22 years ago going backwards in the past? A lot of that's changed over time.
Well, thank you for the report. Last question, do you have a expected sort of time that you'll be finished with the budget? If you can turn your attention to other things?
We aren't sure if we will vote on the budget and be done this Thursday or whether we'll take another meeting. I think we have some tentative meetings scheduled into early December, but we have to have the budget to think how we can do this, to assess the, you know, property tax levy information. We have to have that to them first week in December, I think. So it's going to be soon, in the next week to, either this week or the next week or so. So we'll know, we'll know more on Thursday when we see whether it looks like there are any outstanding issues that we have to spend more time.
Thank you so much.
We did have our public hearing last week and we had, you know, two, only two comments.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to our comprehensive plan update. And my understanding from the last meeting was that we were planning to have your team walk us through, would you want to help maybe articulate the goals of this review?
Yeah, the primary goal is to give you some familiarity with, you know, what was adopted in 2015 or early 2016 and also point out some areas where we know there needs to be some, some update. So I was just gonna have it up on the screen just so everybody kind of knows where we're at. But also I would encourage you to use your paper copy, if you've got it, to follow along. And we'll just, you know, I just wanted to say a couple of things about each element, just to give you some, some highlights. And then, you know, stop me if you have questions about something in that element. Well, before we move to the next one, let's see if we can address some questions. So first thing I wanted to talk about was in the introduction got, you know, this kind of a background explanation of what's confined and these documents. And then the planning framework, I think is we're talking about a little bit. Because these, each one of these aspects of the, let me get that to one page. So, so yeah, we now have your can see what's this 2040 vision, there's now a 2050 vision from the people's sound regional council. So we'll be looking to see, see where we need to update, you know, in terms of the system with that. I think a lot of it's going to be related to housing. You'll see as you go through this, I can, the legacy plan is mentioned a lot of different places. So nothing has been updated with that recently. And in terms of other local plan guidance, you know, we've spent a couple of years on Town Center Vision and Design Guidelines in 2019, 2021. And so that's, that's probably something we need to look at in terms of especially policies in the land use element. So that they still reflect what the council's policy is, as a provision document from the university's design guideline as well as some code changes that may result in some changes that could be made. And the Town Center update was part of something that was referred to as the big five over those last, those two or three years. Second would be the approach plan, arch recreation and open space and trails. And so that was, there's probably a lot in the parks element needs to be updated as far as that's concerned. And then there was a safe streets document and a safe highway document. So those are both kind of capital improvement plans. We have some of the wish list of projects to want to do to improve safety on the city streets and related to, you know, where they connect with the major routes 104 and 522. And so when we get into transportation elements, that's probably an area where you would see some need updates there. And then the fifth thing was Healthy Creeks, just sort of an ongoing process of refurbishing the, the culvers. Big one was right here, Town Center, and they're kind of working their way upstream. Most recently, of course, it's along with the mural. So, so those things are happening, so maybe, you know, check things off and say, accomplished.
I ask a couple of questions about this. So this has to do with the, what's on page eight and nine, right? Basically, the things that are informing it. On that Healthy Creeks, is that a, like a public, is there a, a public document that prioritizes that or describes which ones, or is that part of another document?
I was looking for the Healthy Creek, I, I've actually never seen a document. You know, the city engineer, the Public Works Department. We're just, you know, moving through this, this set of, they're moving upstream. And, and so each one is just a capital facilities project. But I, I'll let you know if I find one. Oh, yeah, a big document, it should be something, so. But it wasn't on that big five site, so I'm not sure where it is.
Could I encourage you all to take a look at the legacy 100-year vision? Because I was surprised in looking at it, what good foresight it has. And if that's a lot of vision involved, that it can value some of the LFP that remain, you know, pretty active and pretty, pretty much guiding the direction for our cities. So I was, I was very impressed the first time I picked it up, how, what good foresight it had. You know, using terms like green infrastructure, you know.
Well, that's what I was trying to think of, of the one, two, three, four, five items that are here that kind of inform that, you know, it sounds like Vision 2040 will be replaced by Vision 2050. The Legacy 100-year vision would stay consistent. I don't know if, if Steve, it sounded like you were saying maybe that Southern Gateway Subareas Plan is maybe relevant, but certainly including the Town Center.
Well, Southern Gateway Plan was already adopted when this cop plan was done. So I think it reflects that, and you'll see that the districts are in there.
Okay.
But, but yeah, the Town Center plan is not very present.
And then the critical areas, like, I mean, that's an ordinance, but is that something that is, was in place when this was originally created or does that have a role in this?
There was an update afterwards. I don't think it really, I think the, the plan is more general than the ordinance in that case. There's not like a, a policy direction change, they're fairly incremental changes the last time it's updated in 2017. You know, you, usually the way it works is you, you update a plan and then you update your regulations to be consistent with the plan. Plans more of the, the guiding document. But there are some cases where, you know, you, you make a significant enough change in your regulations that you need to go back and look at, you know, your plan to make sure it's still consistent. So I just think you'll find the, the policies related to Town Center are really kind of nebulous. And so we know a lot more about what the council was looking for when they adopted those design guidelines and regulations, as well as this, this vision document. It's not, you know, it, it's fairly general, but, but it also may have some policy language shown that you might find will be helpful in bringing the cop plan up to date.
And then what about our cities for to come up with a climate action plan or King County's work in that area? Should that be something that informs this as well?
Yeah, definitely, that's, I guess what, what I'm, my focus on this discussion really was like, what do we know that's been done that needs to be incorporated? Then there are the overriding overarching issues we talked about last time, which is planet, climate action. Then there are the overriding overarching issues we talked about last time, which is planet uh climate action plan, which are we're gonna rely on the committee to come up with, and then uh, you know, trigger the least back and forth on that. And then, of course, um housing affordability, that's gonna be the other big one, you know, and how it relates technically as well. So um, so those are sort of things, I I, you know, I can't tell you how exactly the plan is gonna change at this point. Cause the state and counties are still working out sort of the methodology for how we address affordability. Um and of course, we're waiting for the uh climate action committee to solidify whatever it must recommend for the city. But these are things that just have happened since um
Right.
the uh this plan was adopted. Uh and and so this is, you know, it, this is really long for a video statement. It's, you know, that's you have to throw in the committee, it worked. Um uh commission. And um and it was really intent on sort of uh using the the public input it got to to write this vision. So I'm, I'm not gonna read through the whole thing, but you know, if you do read through it, you know, just kind of um, you know, uh give it some time, each sentence, think about it. You know, is that still where we're at? And you know, and it really, it's just an individual reaction initially. But as you, as we get into more um discussions with the, you know, public events. And then you start to have, you know, more of a basis to think, is this still where we're at um six, seven years later? I I think a lot of it's still um, this is fairly um, you know, in sync with uh the the views I hear here and council and uh, you know, public, but you know, there's, there's probably ways to improve upon it and certainly improvement could be to shorten it. Maybe something, you know, you could read in ten seconds, not, you know, a minute.
So, so just so I'm clear, uh Mr. Bennett, if you don't mind. Um so you're suggesting that we might look at the uh the vision statement and uh make recommendations? Is that what you're saying?
Right, yeah, I think um, you know, there's, this will be sort of the um, the first thing you think about, or maybe the last thing you actually amend in your process. Or or close to it, you know, you, you you wanna make sure um that, you know, if if the um the uh public input you're you're getting is telling you that, you know, this is way off base. Then maybe it is something we spend some time with uh updating to see if you, you know, engage public war just by working on this. That's what this, the the last commission did, they, they spent a lot of time upfront figuring out what the wording was gonna be on this. They had a workshop on it and got people uh, got people's uh input on on it. And and then they went ahead with the rest of the plan. But, you know, I think there's so many sort of incremental things you could doing related to this plan, probably you're thinking about. You might wanna come back afterwards and look at it and say, alright, so we know what we're adopting, or we have, you know, draft elements. Do those elements still reflect, or is it, is this consistent with the the policy changes we made in each other? Um, you know, it's trying to tou- touch on a lot of different things, because the cop plan does, you know, it it is really broad. And it's, it is, that's why it's hard to narrow it down uh to something more succinct. Does that uh answer your question, Commissioner Layton?
It it does, uh in a certain degree, uh and we can have conversations about this as we get more into this. Um I just think of a vision statement as something that uh, you know, the 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 other question that we're asking is how much of this has been accomplished up to this point?
Well, it it's, it's still in the future, so uh and it's gonna be further in the future. Next time it's adopted, so it'll be in twenty forty four. Uh, you know, so I I, you know, I don't think we have, we, you know, we're always, it's, it's a, what's, what's the word? Um striving to get to this, it's an aspirational statement. Uh we we may not be there, but if something is accomplished in it, yeah, we should, we 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 may wanna just tweak it to say, we'll continue to be this, if that was something that's important. Um but you're always sort of writing this as to what, you know, if when this plan is fully implemented. If it ever happened, this is what Lake Forest Park would be like.
Yeah, I I guess what I'm saying though is if we change it again, we're just moving out the it, we're just moving up the vision again, um and then, you know, we never accomplish what we say that we were going to accomplish like ten years ago. A- a- and granted, I know that that circumstances change, um but the vision is supposed to be, from a strategic planning perspective, it, you know, your vision. Either you're changing, uh you're either doing the process all over again, or you're, you know, you're scrapping your current vision, you're starting again. Or you're um, you know, you're adapting the vision that you have currently, acknowledging that something has been created and and acknowledging what hasn't been created or what hasn't been achieved. And, you know, just being accountable for what is being accomplished and what hasn't been accomplished.
Yeah, I'm I'm glad you mentioned the word strategic plan, because um there there is a difference between a comprehensive plan and a strategic plan. Uh you know, we're, we're not um ever going to um decide that we failed because we didn't get to everything. We're just continuing updating this and trying to strive to 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 be the community, to address all of the things you're talking about. And every, you know, twenty year period, you're never getting to everything that's in the plan. And you'll see some of the things in the plan are out of your control. You can't control what a utility district is gonna do. Uh you're just listing, these are the other agencies that are that are out there that have their own plans, and we need to be uh, you know, working with them. This is, in some ways, you know, it's, it's um, it's much more aspirational than uh strategic plans. Where, like, if we're not there in five years, we need to just start over and replan.
Okay.
I think, I want, I wanna get to Melissa's comment, David, I also think that um, in this particular case, this document serves as a guideline for all of our other work. It's a touchstone for us to go back to, to say, this document articulates where our values are and and lie, as does the vision. Uh the legacy vision plan and um when we had the big five. So it's, if you can think of it more as a touchstone, or like Steve said, an aspiration of where we like to be, that we can reference back to justify the decisions we make as a group. Um Melissa, you put your hand up for a minute, if you'd like to jump in.
Uh, well, my question, I guess, is, is, it sort of segues, I guess, from David's comment. And uh is there a tracking system for what we're accomplishing that the public can go to and look at, just to see? Um, for like where we were when we first put together this cop plan and like where we are now? Is there, you know, just like a snapshot that the, you know, the people here in LFP could look at?
No, there, there, there really isn't, I mean, this, this is um, this is the closest we come as a tracking. You know, you're, you're evaluating whether we've, you know, made these uh, most, most comprehensive plan policies. Some, some communities do say, we will do this by, you know, certain such and such a date. Um but, you know, that's never seemed to be a priority for uh our community. Uh we're, we're just, we're, we're trying to show the rest of the region that we're uh either on board, or we figured out a way. We're gonna, you know, meet the the parameters of the, of all the levels of legislation and, you know, policy guideline that that are put out there in the region. And you're also trying to make sure it's clear what, you know, you, you know, individually is important to your community. So um we'll be able to check off some things as we go through this. But um, this is not, this is a document you refer to when you're trying to figure out, you know, what, what is our policy from this? It's not necessarily a promise that we're gonna get this done. And I think that's, that's kind of getting at what I was trying to explain about David, it's like, this is not a teaching plan, it's a, it's a long range.
To keep us moving forward, I'm gonna use a strategy we use in our own work, and that, you're talking about kind of a community report card, that's a good idea. We're gonna put it in our good idea parking lot. And we can pick that up if we would like to, as a group, talk about what that could look like and make a recommendation for that separate from this, if that's okay. I think we've, we spent a few minutes on it, and I think everybody kind of around the table is nodding, like, that would be actually cool if we did have a community report card. Maybe we'll just put that in our parking lot for now, is that satisfactory to both of you?
Sounds good.
Alright, Steve, let's continue, please.
Okay, let's uh move on to the first page, the land use element, which is page nineteen. Um, I just wanted to um, I like this because this, this is a point of reference that this is the kind of thing where volume two comes in handy. Uh a lot of the policy language that's in the land use element and the housing element uh is is based on um, the the, these analyses that are talked about here, uh the growth targets, how we get our homework to make sure we have sufficient uh capacity. And um uh for for that growth target. And just uh, you know, some, some other um details about the uh, you know, existing land use, that kind of thing. So uh, you know, and you can, you can get to the, that volume two um on the, the same link that I sent you uh last week. So land use element is is really the the, the primary element, so everything's kind of uh plays off of it. Uh if you're, you know, depending on what uh, you know, these, these uh land use says, these designations are essentially like zoning districts. They're, they have to essentially be equivalent to the zoning districts, sometimes they can represent more than one district, like you see here as far as multifamily low. But you're, you're um, you know, you don't, your plan is not growth management compliant unless you're zoning and your land use districts match up. That's different in some states, some states you're allowed to to really have a future lands map, which is, you know, someday we want this to be whatever, um, you know, mixed use area. And right now it's industrial or something. But Washington state law is that, you know, you need to to plan for whatever you say it is in your cop plan. Everything needs to be in place for it to happen. Um right, and that includes facilities as well as the the zoning regulations. I always thought that was interesting about Washington state, we used to call it future lands. This is, there's nothing future about it, present. Let's see, the um, so on the next page, uh you'll see how this is kind of um carried out a policy right here. Policy LU one, one point four, manage and maintain the city's official zoning map to ensure continued consistency with the comprehensive plan that is. So we're just signaling that, you know, we gotta stay, we gotta, we're consistent with the GMA. Um, so any other uh, that's kind of very quick overview of the land use element, which I said is important. I don't know if you had any, anybody had any questions about that one? Now we can keep, keep moving. Um, so environmental quality um is kind of a it's an element that really is just picking up a lot of stuff that may not be um addressed in other elements, but it's all related to to environmental regulations. And uh so you've seen reference there in that, that first page, the introduction, those plans that um that we've just been talking about. Uh and other ones, the shoreline master program and community forest manager plan, uh legacy and wildlife management, which was um uh I think just adopted right, right before this, this plan was adopted. And so, so you've, you're, you've got a lot of things going on here in terms of just trying to be consistent with shoreline management, uh which we have a whole, you know, uh that's an interesting document, animal is a document, because it's, it is a plan, it has policies and it has regulations in it. And it's just kind of a creation of states, uh we, it's a very top-down sort of planning. We all have to be, you know, kind of march in the same direction as far as how we're going to incrementally improve the quality of our shorelands. And so everything is designed to, you know, anytime there's development on the shoreline, you know, when you put it back, it needs to be better than it was before. So hopefully, you're down the line, getting a point where our shoreline becomes more and more natural, it's always worked out, that's the basic idea. So that, I, you know, it's not a lot of, it really is kind of reflecting back to what our, what our regulations say. We're kind of looking backwards with this element, making sure, and also establishing some aspirational ideas about education of citizens and things. Um and some things that are kind of out of our control, like uh air quality and uh some things that are like nation, so you can definitely do things about that. Uh and so, you know, it covers a lot of ground.
So uh one of the uh plans our city is embarking on and funding is because of federal and state mandates. We're in the process of developing a surface water master plan um to deal with, you know, runoff and issues like that. Um and so right now, that, that process is just starting off, but part of the budgeting has been to plan that. It's, it's an unfunded mandate, another one um that we're trying to uh do our best uh to implement. So we do have a consultant working with us and if identified likely surface runoff sources and so forth. So we're going to have to have an inspection and reinforcement program as part of that also, which is mandated. So I just wanted to flag that, because it is actually an aspect of environmental quality. And I think there's more focus on uh curv-, you know, impervious, impervious surfaces these days than there was when this plan was put together. So that element will probably come in here, that plan will probably book in here in some way. I can't, I don't know exactly how, but just wanted to flag. You know, Steve.
It's, it's weird, because um last time I heard it was, we're supposed to have something at a comprehensive plan to be compliant with this stormwater permit by twenty twenty three. But I think, you know, all communities, they don't wanna do their conference plan twice. Uh so I think there's a little bit of pushback, the state sort of manages the federal compliance. So um probably around the same time that we um adopt this comprehensive plan, there'll, there'll be some package of policies that can be forwarded in here, I would agree with this.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to flag that. So we have one person basically dedicated for this, that's how small our staff is, plus supporting consult. So we are, we are, and he has other jobs too, so. I also wanted to bring up, as Steve all that uh, these plans that are referenced in here are on our website, if you haven't looked at them, those are things that you can just reference. Um, you know, just looking for background for this section.
Kind of really dumb, but we would offer this in two thousand and fifteen, so we're redoing it. It's kind of state law that we got to do this, this, so state law, we have to redo it every nine to ten years.
Yeah, it's fluctuated, it used to be seven, seven years, but uh finally, I listened to common sense, like ten years is good, cause the census comes up every ten years, let's do it like four or five years on.
Let's say, it's not like twenty fourteen, it's lost the review, it is.
No.
Update it, we don't even, we do it, right, it's just we have to update, we provide an updated.
Yeah, it's a periodic required of.
How redone or not it is.
It doesn't matter, we just have to
we have to re sign up on.
Yeah, you know, absolutely nothing happened that you wanted to update, you could say, uh, you know, and you thought your plan was compliant with state law. You just write him a letter and say, we think it's compliant, thanks. Leave it in there for, yeah, but I, but we already know that there's legislation out there that needs to address.
It was, yeah.
The rest of state laws, okay. Um, okay, I, any other questions or thoughts on environmental quality? Not um, help to the housing. Um, this is, you know, the other really big, I mean, I I think in terms of the amount of time spent on elements, housing and land use are the top. Uh and and in terms, in terms of screwing as well, but what, you know, what's going on here? Uh because this, this plays into that whole idea of targets. And so this is, not only do we have to have the same kind of targets that we have now, which is capacity for new growth. We don't have to make growth happen, we just have the zoning capacity for it. Now we're gonna have to figure out how to um have the capacity or facilitate um the um the ability for affordable housing. So, you know, do, you know, there'll be some uh regional process to come up with a target for different income levels. Uh the way I understand it, and then we're gonna have to show that we have the zoning that that would allow for that. So that may be um, you know, additional work in terms of what we allow in single family zones, in terms of um any use. It could be allowing, you know, duplexes, these are all, these are all these strategies where you could say, yes, we, you know, we did X. So we had X in our comp plan, and by twelve months from the comp plan adoption, we'll have, you know, we'll adopt those regulations.
That is, that topic is very much in flux right now. There's a lot of concern that um mandates to actually implement affordable housing, um especially. Implement affordable housing, um, especially since we have a one percent per year cumulative property tax cap. Uh, which is also part of state legislation, uh, is an impossible burden for cities that are. Uh, primarily property tax funded, like ours. Um, like the one percent uh, property tax increase that we're allowed this year is thirty three thousand dollars. So we will get thirty three thousand dollars more in property tax and most of your uh levy rates will go down as a result. Because of the new construction, right, because it's a, it's an umbrella amount that we can't add more than one percent to. So uh, it's complicated, but uh, so I think that's controversial, on the other hand. Uh, this is the third year that there's a run at making single family housing. Uh, required to be more dense, in other words abolishing it and uh, but not. In my per- personal view, no affordability to the arguments affordability. But uh, you know, my um, I'll just use the same anecdote, my daughter lives in an apartment in Green Lake, there was a little house that sold for like eight hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, on the corner next to her, now there are four giant townhouses selling for one point one million dollars uh, next to her. You know.
And we see that in shoreline, that's that's the issue, every, every one of our neighboring cities that has removed a small home, right? Has replaced it with very expensive apartments and very expensive. I think you're right, that's, I don't want to lose sight of that, there's many teeth and we don't have any neighbors who are achieving. Right, uh, or making progress with.
So the question is, if there is state legislation that passes this time, because Governor Inslee has been supporting this. And the latest version I heard, though it can change completely, is every single family lot of a certain size. Can have a trip likes, right, so there's different versions of this that float around, but but I think that there could be some. Local zoning allowed for environmental protection, more energy efficiency for. For affordability, that would be good. We did adopt in our city for the first time when the town center code was adopted, provisions that provide tax incentives for affordable housing. And also requirements that if there was multifamily housing, I think over five minutes. I forget what the threshold was, you have to have some affordable housing in there, um. And we do have the King County Housing Authority Project, which I always mentioned, the people would land north apartments on um, Bockaway.
But that doesn't address.
That doesn't address, well, I think that it doesn't address the regional need, yes, I am, I understand. So I actually think the ADU work is some of the most significant work we've done on affordability, so, but. We're gonna be mandated, we don't know what the rules are are gonna be, and Steve is right, this is gonna be. There is a push to actually make implementation of affordable, affordable housing a mandate. And track that, but I, I think there's been a lot of concern, well, how does that work, we don't, if we, same for climate change, honestly. If climate change action is mandated and there's no funding that comes with it, right now there is no funding that comes with it. Uh, from the state or the county, so, you know, how does that work? So you'll be in the middle of all these cool hot topics.
Is it fair to say that typically when there's no funding, that it's a uh strongly recommended, but not mandated?
It's it's not, I mean, it's it's mandated that you, the way these things work is, you you're not standing in the way of this happening. Like, if we decided uh, back in nineteen or or twenty oh five, then. That, you know, we were, we were, we're never going to have anything less than half acre zoning. Um, you know, there there was a similar sort of uh, you know, anxiety about the idea that you had to allow, that you couldn't have a. A zoning over a quarter acre lot. Uh, and and there were, you know, people sued because they, they did decide, we're not gonna have uh, smaller zoning than a half acre. That's just the way, that's who we are. Um, but you know, if if you just create, what what we did, is we said, look, we have all these critical areas. Some lots are over, or you know, some zones are still gonna be over a quarter acre, as far as their their minimum lot size. But it's because they have all of this, uh, you know, uh, these creeks and and slopes and all that, and so we managed to encase. That way, so that's what's gonna happen here, I mean, I can assure you that that uh, city planners, although the reason are pushing back just as hard. It's council and code, he's like, but they're like saying, you know, we we, we can't make this happen, we can't make a, you know, developer to put all. Affordable units in their development, our regulations say you have to do twenty percent. And that's, that's, that's probably more, you know, we could be, you know, choking on development just by having that. So that, this kind of thing, it's all gonna shake itself out, we're gonna come up with something that we can live with, uh, and. Uh, you know, it's a, it's really just like, you're just staying tuned in to to how cities are addressing this and not getting in the way. More so than anybody else is getting in the way, you don't want to be the the low hanging fruit when it comes to, you know, being egregiously out of line. Because somebody, not the state, the state's not gonna take you to the hearing board, it's just somebody, you know, like. Future wise or uh, uh, an advocate for for allows, and they will make you change your plan. It is a key to keeping it, you're you're around, understand kind of what's passing, what's, you know, way out there.
Can I ask a question on that? So, you know, when we developed our town center ordinance, one of the questions was, uh, whatever we changed could be appealed. Uh, but what we didn't change, the deadline had already passed, so. Is that true of the comprehensive plan, or is it, you know, appealable as a whole?
Well, as soon as, yeah, as soon as you break into a document that you you could pass with one motion, and the whole thing is subject to.
Okay, that's what I was guessing, but I I wasn't sure.
I I think, you know, your your land use code can be separated from, you know, the right away code, you can't appeal the right way, somebody changed.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Before we move on from this, does anybody, Melissa or David? I can't see you, so I just want to make sure you're not trying to jump in. You're good. Do you have something Walter? Well, I think there are attention points, right, and I think we'll we'll uncover those as we, as we move through. I I was listening to your conversation last time about um. Requirements for certain infrastructure to be in place, and I know we heard that somehow are. I know probably didn't get this wrong, but like our our ability to handle um. What is it sewage, but or waters, uh, certain, no, it was, it had to do with our capacity, we talked about this with town center. That we need upgrades to some of our. Yeah, or something uh, relative to that, and so I think all of these things are gonna kind of intersect, like. If we do this, what are our other obligations, you mentioned that the last thing open space was an issue for us. You know, how do these all sort of relate to one another? I mean, it's kind of a fun thing for us to work on, right, to unpack those and figure out. Um, you know, where improvements are necessary to achieve other things like having, you know, more affordability or. What's your thought there?
No, I I think, you know, I was just thinking in order to kind of help process along, um. Would it make sense to discuss the scope of work that I think you guys are, I mean, I, it sounds like you already have a sense of. What needs to kind of be addressed, uh, when we.
Yeah, well. You know, I I just want to make sure that um, you guys have familiarity and have some basis for. Like, you know, reacting, I mean, to me, the hardest thing, uh, it's not a document like this, this long, it's just, it's just finding a way. Where me as mean to do, and so I'm hoping that, you know, that just going through this and. You know, you you need to know, you know, where it might be out of date, I think, to get started on this. And and then the scope of work comes in when we're have a better handle on those nuances. And because this, you know, we're gonna get some input from a consultant on what needs to be updated in this, but. Yeah, the consultant really is gonna be focused on that housing needs assessment. And then, um, you know, incorporating anything else related to to state law. Um, but you know, you guys really are the ones that as you're getting public input, you need to have some familiarity with this document. And know, like, you know, well, this sounds like it's really, you know, what I'm hearing is really making that section sound out of date. You really need to address that. Or or maybe there's something, you know, there's an equity issue there, that, you know, we were just kind of blind to. Uh, seven years ago, that that, you know, is all of a sudden, just looks like, wow, this pops out at you. Uh, it's just really easy not to look at every page.
Sure, Steve, is there budget for consultant services for the public engagement part of this? In your future budget?
There there will be, uh, but we're just not quite far enough long, you know.
Yeah, I understand, I just wanted to make sure that.
Is that granted, granting um, opportunities of Washington State Department of Commerce, is that what it plans?
Yeah, we we, we're gonna get, uh, non competitive, I'd hear twenty thousand, work on the comp. Um, and so.
Because of our city's size, right?
Because of our city size, yeah, but, uh, you know, I would say that, you know, you're, you know, this. This type of project is more getting up to the hundred and fifty, hundred and eighty thousand dollar product, so it's not gonna cover anything. And it really depends on how much of that um, public engagement you want to do, if you want to do surveys, like you talked about, some of those can be done, you know. Um, fires, you know, our staff and commissioners.
So do you have an idea when, time wise, that conversation about. Uh, about public engagement, support, support.
That's our first to do, to all agree on what the scope is.
No, no, I'm a, I'm a, I did, I meant more. When my, the conversation about figuring out the moment support for public engagement. When, is that like four months from now, is that in months from now?
I think it's like, you know, one or two, three months. Just, you know, the, we, when we hire a consultant, you want them to be working on public engagement and the updating of actual language. It's, it's one process as I see it.
I'm asking because I want to make sure I inform the council. Uh, you know, because that's gonna be a, uh, you know, an area of interest.
Council is not only gonna have to prove the scope, you're gonna have to prove the contract with the uh, consultant, so you're you're gonna be. You know, before the planning commission really dives in, you're gonna know exactly what there is.
It's not really, even on the council radar, right, at this moment, that's why.
Which is okay.
Yeah, that's. I know, okay, good, thank you, I'm sorry to occupy your thought here.
No problem, so um, can you move on to economic development? There is no objection. This this is, you know, this is the the place where the town center probably is mentioned more uh, than anywhere else. Uh, and and so that's, that's gonna be an area you probably want to see, think about. You know, it doesn't still make sense to have an economic development element, or or is there some other way to approach this? Um, that that is more to with the the policies related to, you know. Change in the community and in creating, you know, stimulating uh, the kinds of growth that the community is comfortable with. Or is it, or is it still addressing uh, points that, um, you know, you think are important? But it's uh, it's kind of, the complex always has an economic development element, but um, it's it's not something that. Um, I think has been having priority, uh, but maybe, maybe it will be. Um, and this is another kind of um. Element that I think it's 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 very aspirational in terms of what, you know, as community, our size to do in the um, the realm of public. Um, through the service and um, public safety, but they, you know, it. It is trying to, you know, kind of pull together and in addition to create some policy language. Uh, also kind of educate you what's out there, who we're trying to coordinate with, um, you know, and uh. Essentially, you know, we we have some programs that are all kind of spinning off of our police, our public safety department. But that's, that's really, um, you know, our main um, toolbox in terms of uh. As well as senior centers and that kind of thing, but which are, you know, run by other entities. Have a facility for the important ones, you're 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 always looking back, that what are we promising to do in the way of. Housing uh, and developments. Uh, good man use and doing, are the facilities in place? Um, when the development is planned to happen. But the first line is is really the key to the capital facility development, the right facilities are in the right place to support development. Um, it's made in Landisown. So that means, you know, in communities that are on the outskirts of the region. Uh, you you you're not supposed to, you know, approve a subdivision out there. That you haven't put in enough uh, lanes to allow for new traffic. Where they don't have water and sewer. You know, we grew up in Florida, where you would see just skeletons of subdivisions all over the place, this roads. To no, no houses, and that's where growth manager really started, Florida, there's just too much of that. That's, you have to start having that facility to go. And so, you know, it's it's uh, also addressing what what the um. Facilities are of other, other age, or what the plans are for other agencies, we can't. So, because our Lake Forest Park is not a full service city, so the county and other agencies provide. Rest, fire, rescue schools, we do, we do our own sewer, um, and we do a lot of transportation, as we have a transportation. Water, um, it's actually provided by other entities, but within, but um, they're not controlled by the city government. And um, that. Praises parks, and we, you know, can have a lot of work to do in parks, because we do have this uh, post plan. And we also have another park, because it's a concrete plate, and the post plan was adopted. That that'll probably, maybe have some, you know. Part for the horse issues, maybe you get the the post plan and, you know, and at the last minute incorporate something in the. In the comp plan to address the new post plan, and see how that shakes out.
So there will be um, new master plan for the park, which is the updated post plan. And it would be probably a little more focused in, um, rather than a menu. Uh, actually be a little bit more focused in on what the next steps are for department presidents and so forth. And then there'll be a integrated master plan for the waterfront park, right, so, which is. Starting from scratch, and we'll have to have a lot of. Different elements, including things like security and parking, so forth like that, so. Uh, so there's an umbrella of the overall master plan, and then. A master plan for the lakefront park, so they're, they're gonna be busy in the parks board. Because they have to basically, uh, public engagement now, uh, two, two kind of missions. Um, I don't think we have the timeline for that yet.
No. Uh, so, just two other questions on parks, uh, moving on to utilities. Uh, this, you know, like I said, we do our own sewer, that's about it, so, once again. We're just kind of listening, what's going on out there, we're getting our, all of our services and we want, you know, need to, you know. Cooperatively work and planning studies other entities. Um, uh. So, not one of the more important elements, but we want to make sure um, that we're, you know. That we not missed anything in terms of uh, uh, updating policies that are out of date. Then transportation is one of the big ones, some, some, some of these are mandatory elements, and others are are option. Uh, transportation is one of those mandatory elements, uh, it it deals with um, level of service, just like. Uh, capital facilities, if the facilities are in place at the time of development. Um, or that new development doesn't lower the level of service, so that, uh, which, you know, is is. It it's it's a little too idealistic for a situation we're in, where we're a built out community, we've got. Facilities that are hard to expand, like five twenty two. You know, and and so you're um, you're you're really just kind of justifying that um, we're gonna. Be happy with this level of service, this amount of, you know, slow traffic, because we can't really do a lot about it. Except, you know, increase transit, uh, and give you alternatives to uh, cars. So.
We are looking to reduce speed. Um, uh, and so the areas that we can control, we're looking at reductions. Uh, not below twenty five miles per hour, uh, for twenties really. Uh, for twenties really is low. Uh, and then, uh, you know, for some of the semi arterials, we're looking at, you know, what that would be. And then we work with DOT to reduce speed limits on, on five twenty-two. Where everyone goes at least.
When you're saying you're looking at speed limits, most of the speed limits through the neighborhoods, even on arterial like one seventy-eight, they're already twenty-five or so, which.
Yeah, so they're, where they are, where they are higher, we're looking at uh, and it will probably be a pilot program. Cause we're using new uh techniques. Um, I think the other question is what can we do for traffic calming when we are gonna see and we are seeing increasing cut through traffic? And then, you know, there was some discussion about can you, can you make some roads one lane? And then the question was, well, what about, we're seeing consequences, like if you made Perkins Way one way? Uh, you know, what would happen to one seventy-eight, right? So uh, it's, it's an active conversation in the council because we do want to make the city more pedestrian friendly and safer for walkers. Uh, and because we, we don't, and we don't want our street improvement projects to be just about how do we improve streets for cars. So there is, I think, a sense of the council along those lines, but exactly what we can do and afford to do is limited. But I do think over a period of years, we'll try to get the speed limit reduced on five twenty-two, so it's commensurate with Lake City way. Oh, wow.
One ninety-seven. Our, our main gray, that's a thirty.
Thirty. Calling it a drive is appropriate.
I know. People are going, they, Gail's one that got those electronic insights up there, but cost people forty, forty-five miles an hour to banana hill, everybody's walking their dogs. Wait for somebody to kill them, the little kids are waiting.
Effectively areas that are twenty-five, trying to get more areas.
Exactly, exactly. And using other things like the flashing lights and so forth, because we can't, we don't have enough police coverage to cover all those places.
Oh, exciting.
But we can put more traffic cameras near parks. That's the new state law that we got, so we haven't done that. Uh, but, you know, it, it does effectively slow traffic when you have traffic cameras.
You might guess people do in parts of their front yard as parks to the city.
Yeah.
I didn't think you'd go down one ninety-seven.
Back to this. Where, what, what's next? So we got to the end of this document and what, what is next for conversation?
Um, you know, I, I think uh we need to do some more work to get you um better idea of the scope of things that we know we need to do, get, get you that more detailed. So that's kind of what I hope with um the part of the next meeting, but also um part of at least one former commissioner, um, that, I'm not sure if it was actually part of the meeting or not, but there was a um a thought that we should invite some um previous commissioners to speak to you about their experience in the conference. And so Richard Saunders agreed to come for December thirteenth meeting.
And maybe John Lebo would come as part of that too.
Hopefully.
Joel, yeah. Um, I'm curious on the funding side of things, just being mindful of what you said upfront about the budget and it being pretty challenged. And then Steve, what you just said about the fact that they available grant through the commerce, through commerce, is it gonna be sufficient? Is council uh earmarking in the budget money to close the gap? Um, so that we have a better understanding of, you know, exactly how much support we would receive from a consultant versus how much we really want.
It's in his book.
Yeah, it's a little.
Usually, usually gonna hate, that's not.
So you've already said sort of what the delta is gonna be and you feel like we'll have the money for that.
You know, it depends, right? When the contract comes forward, the council will have a discussion. It's, it's a frugal time unless.
Totally. I was just thinking since the burden is on us to a degree, you know, uh, like.
He has, Steve has got abilities.
Kind of you were speaking last time.
Well, I still am fully on board, very contacting the local bars, you know, one.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, you know, we're.
I just think it would be helpful to know more about that, so that as we're generating ideas for, what are some things that we can do in terms of engaging the public, you know, or the community versus what would we be leaning on, you know, a consultant to lead workshops or whatever? So that, that's all I was looking for is, because I think that will um impact, you know, some of our decision-making on that. Whether we're at farmer's markets with clipboards or, you know, when the.
I think council would start with the grant.
Yeah, that's great.
But Steve, I think, has flexibility in his budget and has been, it is good.
Yeah, just in terms of gathering information, it feels like that's something to, to start with. Uh, I, Matty, I, I just wanna say the, the, the survey that you came up with and the way you interact, like it was just this online platform. I feel like there's just the potential to interact with, I mean, mom, the PTA moms, I mean, and these, already a lot electronically created these, uh, these, these platforms, it seems, it seems like such a shame to not use them. But I don't know, you know, what the formal format would be so that we stay, you know, focused on it with, you know, city regulations or any, or how that's. I mean, I, I mean, I would love to know, uh, I mean, could it be a clipboard? I mean, which is labor intensive, but using something online platform seems very do.
I know, I just have to really formulate questions carefully so that you get the feedback you're looking for. Um, and you know, that's, that's one of the reasons to have a consultant that has experience in public engagement on comprehensive plans. Because it's just a little bit, you know, distinct, um, accessory dwelling. It's just like, what's your experience been like, and where do you wanna be in twenty years in this community? And, you know, what are the things you think are most important? Would people list one of the highest priorities for you? So, so, yeah, you know, the questions are gonna be a little bit different, but there's no reason you can't use a survey book or whatever to start getting feedback.
We, the only, and the only reason we did that for the ADU is because there was no money for a consultant. We are getting asked to, to work on the code within the absence of any, you know, any.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So.
But I think it would be so helpful to get us some, just because it's such a broad, you know, issue. Just make people get some, something to sync our team.
Yeah, but anyway, uh, timing on a consultant, uh, what, what is, I think you talked about.
It is in first quarter, next year, we should probably have, be close to selection.
So maybe that's something we can all think about. Are there, you know, is, is there anything that we can do between now and the end of March to uh inform ourselves more about, like, what are some other questions that we have relative to our comp plan? Or what, you know, what is it that, you know, we think we might wanna know just for our own education in order to be able to chew on these items um together? Uh, also, in terms of identifying the parts that you know need to change, I ran across on Commerce's site a periodic update checklist for fully planning cities. Um, and it was a, uh, are you familiar with this document? Uh, it was really nice because it had hot links actually to legislation that's changed. And I, I wonder as we, you know, leave our meeting tonight and, and prep for next time, what is it that uh would be the most useful thing for us to do? To be primed for the next step? You know, in this process, like identifying the scope or, you know, where to start? I'm thinking from a planning standpoint, how do we start to arrange our meetings and, you know, what, how, how do we basically, you know, carve this up and tackle it?
Well, I mean, I, I find that checklist, I mean, I can imagine, you know, you might, you know, if you look at it. Um, I wanna have the consultant on board and say, you know, you're the expert. You've got this. Uh, but so you, that you're, you're, I'll, I'm happy to send it to you if you wanna dive into it.
Oh, I have it right here. I just wondered if that, oh, right, sure.
See if the rest of the commission would like to receive it. Um, I, I could do that. I'd like to hear from all of them if they wanna get into that public detail. I think, um, you know, there, there, there are some other documents that we have talked about. Uh, and just go and do what's, what's in the comp, what the comp plan refers to. So I think that would be the first step. What do you, you know, look at, look at the safe streets, safe highways, post-plan, uh, legacy plan as uh councilor voting was saying, um, and that would be a really good first step. Just so, so you're, you know, indoctrinated into kind of where the thinking runs this community over the last fifteen years or so. Uh, and, and then, um, you're left. I think if you get too caught up in what we need to do, you're gonna, we're gonna spend way too much time on something that's probably gonna change by the time we actually get to uh recommended policy direction, because it is really a moving target.
So it sounds like what you're saying is the best place to spend time is not worrying about the scope at this point, but uh really going to and becoming very familiar with the documents that were part of the first section here that, that the likes, that in, that inform at the safe streets, same highways, just get re-familiarized with all of those key documents you listed at the beginning.
Yeah, they're, they're on the big five website. I'll confirm that we've got a copy. But yeah, it's really those ones that have been adopted since.
Okay.
And so, so especially related to streets and highways, uh, show streets and town center. Uh, you know, I think, um, what about, well, just, uh, two of you were actually. Yeah, two of you were, were on the, we did it to town center. So, so, yeah, the town center uh is, is a big piece of where our policies change in terms the most, the biggest piece in terms of land use and land use is where this plan starts. It's what is our land use, uh, you know, policy framework? So, um, that, that would be a big part of it. And then, you know, um, I'll, I'll try to get you something on the, on the creeks. It was, uh, that's, that's gonna be part of what, that's the, one of the mayor's main emphasis. He wants to see, you know, get, get a lot of that done during his, his tenure as mayor. So, um, so the big five is probably the main thing just under time.
Okay, great. So everybody needed some.
Yeah, can I, the, the thing that I, I, when I read this document, me personally, I, I can really identify with kind of the spirit of what it's saying. And, and so my feeling is that I, I don't feel that it needs to be tremendously long, but I really like it. But I, I do think that we need to update it so that it is in core, you know, it, it just reflects where we're at, because we've had, we have had a lot of changes. And that's kind of how I see, um, you know, one way that we've really, uh, you know, the length of, that's. Go around out there.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that's what you're saying, Steve, right? Is that, is that if we're familiar with our current comp plan and, and we are re-familiarized with key documents in our city, we're going to be well primed then to look at the things as like a phase one, the things that absolutely need to be updated based on new.
Yeah.
So that's, all right. I, I mean, that's true of him.
I mean, I don't think we, that's what I, I think Steve's guy said, we don't do this in court. Right. I think we pick what we already have worked on, town center, parks, we've worked on that. I have, I said, some of the stuff would later, but I, I think that's where we start and get our feet wet with those documents and indoor and stuff that were not right.
So it sounds like then based on that, I read there's this sort of alignment with existing internal documents, and then there's alignment with required mandates. Right, but we don't know what the required mandates are, because you're, you're going to kind of do that like work to identify.
Yeah.
Okay, that, but what we could be working on is alignment between internal documents.
Yeah, and you, and um, you could, uh, the next meeting, thinking about, do you want to uh appoint a liaison to start talking with the climate action committee? Just to, so, you know, somebody get a hand on whether they're headed. That, that was you, how I feel what's in the comprehensive plan. Do, you know, is, is it worthwhile now to, to um be attending their meetings, you know, fairly regularly just to see? Uh, you know, let them know that we're, you're interested as a commission, what they're doing. That's a whole other aspect of it, and what are the other commissions up to? What's a part word up to them, they're doing the first? You, send somebody to one of those meetings and just, you know, express interest in what they're doing. Uh, and, and get that, you know, intercommittee in going.
Right. We just have our own, we have our liaison to the liaison.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, well, that sounds good. I mean, I, I can definitely personally use these documents to sort of evaluate, you know, at the current plan, and if we can just do that, if we can, you know, cross-reference these documents charts, see plan to see where, you know, that might be a good, good way to become familiar, so when we have to dig into the mandate changes, we're really well versed in the material. Okay, great.
Yeah, remember, this is, this is a marathon, it's not a stretch.
Yeah.
Just paste it on.
Sure.
It'll take a little while, but to really figure out what we need to do.
Yeah.
Appreciate your, your attention. I know this is a, a little deadly goal, so I'm but, uh, at least I, I, you know, I feel like we can do it all. Thank you for putting that.
Yeah. Well, and you and I can meet too, to try to kind of lay out a roadmap for it, so that we're, you know, that we have nowhere for headed most of the. Um, I think that's one of the things that was a lesson learned, uh, I remind, agree with this. While we were doing the town center, we, it felt a little bit more like a pinball machine, because that now, so we have a roadmap for how we were, it's every living drama. Uh, and so maybe that's something you and I can work on, is a roadmap for our group. Who we understand how we're, you know, taking this apart and that, that might be helpful. So we don't have that circular conversation, so really like this, I think, for a while.
If I could, um, just jumping off of what Lois was saying. I think, um, that there's gonna be bigger things associated with, say, housing affordability, climate action and so forth. But then, in a way, consistency with the town center zoning and your ADU work, that's, that to me is, feels smaller scale. And that's, um, but, but it's, it's as important to express it properly, right? So, uh, I just wanted to say, to me, I see big chunks and then I see little, uh, little chunks that are, are still very important, because this is out of date with some of the things we've accomplished. But might be easier to, to do those more, almost more housekeeping. They're not really housekeeping, because they are part of the values and vision of, you know, policies. But anyway, I just, I just, uh, was listening to this and thinking there's big chunks.
It's almost like a warm-up. It's a really contextualized way for us to get familiar with and working on the comp plan before we get into the head of your issues. For sure. Any other comments? Question? Melissa, David? Walter?
Nope, just got a lot of reading.
A lot of reading to do. A lot of posted notes and.
Open, open book, yes.
I know, I feel like what I thought about, I would have brought everybody some really colorful, like those page flags, like, like Mayor.
All right.
High bar.
Well, but the town center and teach us all how to use it.
Um, okay, well then I'm gonna move us on to reports and announcements, anything?
Um, we are close to hopefully making an offer for New City Harvest. Uh, so very excited about that, we can fully staff again.
What about Tanner's replacement? Uh, no, who was the?
Cameron.
Cameron.
Riley, Riley started uh about a month ago.
Okay.
And, well, yeah, I think, um, he's a he's been doing a couple few more meetings now, so he's a you know, fitting in really well.
Welcome, my wife's a state.
Riley, um.
Riley Bushnell.
Okay, cool. Yeah, we'll hopefully we'll have a chance to meet him. Okay, great. All right, what about uh additional citizen comments? Do we have anyone else besides my husband here? No. I happen to know, it's probably not even listening. Um, all right, agenda for next meeting, it sounds like maybe you'll start maybe helping us unpack some of the mandates that will.
Yeah, and um, hearing from various.
And maybe, um, the missing middle, the missing middle group had postponed.
All right.
Because this, and, and so they may be ready next month, we'll see. I met with them, uh, they were the group that came forward, they're really interested in, um, uh, uh, starting, uh, uh, the housing trust, yeah, organization that kind of at the beginning of that. And I met with them on Friday and we talked a little bit about, you know, where they were at, they answered questions just about our work and, um, so they, they may be ready in December, they may postpone, I will see, depending on what their progress has been. And then, um, the, I don't know when that survey's closing, have you guys all filled that out for the climate action, um, committee? If you haven't, go into your email, there was a link to it, um, and I think that, you know, it would might maybe nice to hear from them again on what they found or, um, and I like your idea, Steve, about maybe having, you know, us choose a committee. And I like your idea, Steve, about maybe having, you know, us choose a committee that we could start following their meetings at least for a little while to kind of get, you know, uh, to firsthand knowledge about some of the, like, the first committee and the climate committee, um, to inform our conversations here. So be thinking about that, okay, I think that's it. Last comments, be ready, I'll take a motion then. Anybody want to offer a motion to adjourn? Second, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Melissa, it was great to see you, David, good to see you.
Bye.
Thanks for being here.